Good evening, everyone. Although it's a relatively small crowd this evening. Let's start our meeting by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Harris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have some board business this evening. So we're going to take care of that really quick. And let's see, what we have on the agenda, I guess we have to approve our agenda first. So currently, we have approval of modified school calendar, and we're going to delete that. Is that correct? Okay. And then, did we have an addition? An addition of a Section 211 waiver?
Correct.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve that addition?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. So that will just take place of 2A. Brian, could you talk to us about the waiver?
Nope, he can't.
No, he can't.
I can.
Oh, you can. You talk to us about the waiver.
Yep. So each year-
Well, wait a second. Okay, can we have approval of the agenda? Sorry about that.
You just did.
Oh, no, you approved the-
We approved the change of the agenda, not the agenda.
So moved. In a second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Technicalities here. Okay.
So each year, each year, we require a waiver for Mr. Flood. It's through civil service, and it is for Mr. Flood to continue as our Director of Safety and Security. And so each year, we work with Monroe County Civil Service in order to secure his services for the next year. So, yeah, that's it.
Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay. And we have a motion.
Motion that Superintendent signs the Section 211 waiver.
It's second. Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries for zero. So Neil Flood's all set for the year. All right. Now, we're going to enter the Budget Workshop section of our meeting. So at our last meeting, which was, I believe, March 2nd, we talked about, well, Brian Freeman presented central office budgets, buildings and grounds, community education, building budgets, debt service, transportation, athletics, and benefits. And so tonight, we're going to talk about, well, revised revenue numbers. We're going to talk about curriculum, special ed, people personnel, instructional technology, general instruction, and then we're going to have a time for question and answers. So, Brian, would you like to get started?
Sure. Welcome. You're getting ready to talk about some of our revenue updates. Since the last time we met, about three weeks ago now, we've had some changes to our revenue. So I'm going to just show you those. So we've had no changes, though, to our tax levy limit. That's still the same. Nothing's changed there. Sales tax, pilots, our miscellaneous revenues, and our appropriated fund balance. But as we're putting the budget together, I know at the last workshop, we put a "to be determined for reserves." But right now, I'd put a $2 million placeholder for our budget this year. And that's $75,261 more than what we were currently using for '16-'17. I wanted to use just a round number to be right at $2 million for our exercise tonight. So that's where we're at. As you can tell, though, our state aid between '32 and '323 has changed by $400,000. And I wanted to get into that in a little bit more detail, because I've always stressed, you know, that we have a governor's run, and that's based on projections. So we have a much better idea of where we're headed with state aid. Not foundation aid yet, but what we control of state aid. So let's take a look at a couple of those categories. So the first column is always is just our '16-'17 state aid projections, what we set as our budget for state aid. Second column is what the governor presented. We've seen that before. I'd just like to do that benchmark comparison for everybody, so you could see what we had last year for budget, what the governor's proposing, and then what I'm proposing as of right now, what our state aid projection should be going into '17-'18. You'll see four highlighted areas, because those are where I'm going to spend the most time talking. As you can see, no foundation aid changes from the governor's proposal to what I think is going to go forward. And we could talk a little bit more about what we think's going to happen at the end here. High-cost excess going down from last year. Remember, these first two, high cost and private, based on student enrollment, and that's lifetime data. So if anything happens between, you know, March, or what day is it? March 23rd today, and June 30th, any students come in or move, you know, we're kind of locked in. So if we set that amount, and we, maybe a student moves, we're not going to get that aid next year. So those last couple of months, you try to wait until the last possible moment to lock in a budget number for those ones that are driven by student counts, especially that are based on students with disabilities. Private excess cost between last time and today, it's a $50,000 adjustment. That's a more stable, rather than fluctuating, population, because those are in specific programs that are outside, you know, really strict programs. So that population doesn't change as much as the population in the high-cost excess line. So I felt confident about adding $50,000 there. Next is BOSEs. BOSEs is purely based on what we spent. You got to spend it to get it back. So right now, I had a much, much better look at what our projection for total BOSEs cost will be through June 30th. So I felt confident in raising that amount up to a $5 million projection. So, you know, almost $450,000, a little bit more than what we had spent last year, because, you know, we're doing the one-to-one initiative. We buy a lot more technology through BOSEs. We're on a very cohesive and strict plan. So we're pretty set with that number. I think we could, I felt confident we can increase that state aid line, because I feel good about where our expenses are to be able to get that back. No changes to building aid from the last time we presented. That's still the same amount. And then transportation aid, taking a closer look at what is going on with transportation aid. Once again, that's based on what I think we're going to expend come June 30th of this year. We'll get that in aid next year. We're doing some things to the garage over there that have increased our expenditures, not unplanned, but, you know, within the budget that's set for transportation. So I think we're going to get a little bit more aid next year. We're really cleaning out a lot of the storage areas, moving things, which is causing us to order, you know, upgrading some of the computer programs over there for parts inventory and storage. In essence, we're modernizing the bus garage. So because of that, we're going to get some more aid. So you see an increase in aid there of $100,000. So all told, that's where you're going to see, on the expense basis, where I feel we're going to be for next year. Now, getting into foundation aid. Where do we stand for that? You know, it's just a little bit more than a week away from the state budget being due. Next Saturday is April 1st. So we've seen what's out there. The numbers appear to be more favorable from the Senate budget and the Assembly budget. Far more dollars allocated towards foundation aid than the governor has allocated. So it's a positive sign in the right direction. We just don't know which direction the formula's going to go in. Is it going to be allowed to run as-is? There's some talk of a three-year phase-in, which would be beneficial. You know, our number to hit at the end of three years would be $8.3 million. That'd be a tremendous benefit if that was broken up over three years to come back to the district. And, you know, a lot of what-ifs, is the budget going to be on time? So hopefully, we'll have those answers when I come back to you for the final budget approval in the first week, week and a half of April. So that's where I'm at, an update on the revenues and state aid. Any questions on anything? Okay. So we could get right into the expenditure side now. First up is our curriculum area. So we're going to see some increases in professional development, really through Monroe One BOSEs, augmenting the level of PD that's offered. And it's really a response to what a lot of districts have requested. You're also going to see an increase here based on the new BOSEs program and its expense costs related to professional development, where we take the salaries we expend in professional development, run them through BOSEs, and get state aid on it. Something that started, we just started doing this at the end of actually last fiscal year. This is the first full year we've done it. So we're going to receive aid on those costs for the first time. But we have to shift, for our budgetary purposes, those salary expenditures that were over in instruction are over here now in a specific BOSEs code. So you'll see smaller salary cost increases, but it makes it look like there's a much larger expense on the curriculum side, because there's not a lot of salaries over here. So when you move it over, it makes it look very, very large. Overall, though, it's curriculum. We spend 1.34% of the overall estimated budget on our curriculum and professional development in those areas. So we could get right into those numbers on the next slide here. Here's a two-year look back plus proposed. So really, here's that BOSEs cost increase right here at the bottom, the $183,000. And $150,000, that is salaries, that we can now funnel through BOSEs to get aid on them, whereas previously, we haven't. We're just setting this up as part of the budget now. We did a transfer, a budgetary transfer. You notice it on the quarterly expenses, that this BOSEs line is increased, just doing that now as part of the budget process. So it's set for next year to reduce the budget transfers. Usually, the goal is to try to have less budget transfers throughout the year. So, you know, $150,000, that is salaries. Instructional salaries are below contractual rates. Non-instructional salaries, a little higher. And just some additional supplies to the curriculum for development moving forward I will point out, one, the reasons for a kind of shift in salary increase here is concern recently with some of our federal grants and money being taken away from Title I or Title II, or what's going to happen. Just kind of planning for that, to pull back some of the salaries that are normally all in grants, you know, just to give us a little cushion into the general fund budget in case we do see some cuts to those grants. And we do use some curriculum development in non-instructional salaries. So that's why you see it a little bit larger than what you would normally see on a salary trend. Next up is our instructional technology budget. And this is, first year of our one-to-one is almost complete. It has been a resounding success, I think, from my perspective and from Mr. Neenan's perspective, and Mr. Zimmer and Mr. Matamaro over instructional technology. But one of the things I always, I presented this to the board when we were discussing about it, but I wanted to reexamine it and re-bring it to everyone's attention, what exactly we're doing with technology. So way back in 1516, actually before 1516, I'll point out this $2 million mark, we would spend $2 million on technology randomly, all over the place. No rhyme or reason, no pattern. Some schools would get Macs, some schools would get HP, you know, it was all, there wasn't cohesiveness. Same thing with our copiers. So I looked at that $2 million as a benchmark, and what could we do going forward that made more fiscal responsibility? So we looked at a lease program, so that was started at the end of 1516, going into this year with the one-to-one. If we spent $1.1 million a year, we could get every kid a Chromebook, and it's less than what we would spend on an average year with technology. So we get almost $3.4 million worth of equipment upfront, but we're only paying 1.1 of it for the next three years. Then at the end of three years, trade it in, you get new equipment. So you're always on the cutting edge. So as part of that now is, all right, what's the next step? And here's where BOSEs aid comes in. So 1516, we had this expense. 1617, we get this amount of aid. So the, what I've highlighted here, $689,000. Take that amount of aid and turn it into another lease, because students need devices. Who else needs devices? We have specialized computers in art classrooms, specialized computers in technology. All that needs to be replaced as well. So we could have $2.1 million of equipment spread over three years, okay? And we're still not yet even to the amount we were spending back in 1415, okay? So right now, we're at 1.8, still below the amount we would put towards technology at the end of the year. So now, fast forward another year, we now get almost $744,000 in aid now that year. Comes back up, all right, let's turn that into another $1.4 million. In three years, we've revamped our entire technology department to have the greatest cutting-edge things that are sustainable going into the future. Because at the end of the fourth year, here's the net expense. Do we have an increase to the $2 million we were spending? Yeah, we're up to about $2.5, $2.6 million in technology hardware and equipment. But now with all the aid, what are we net really expending? $1.3 million less than what we would do previously.
So were you sending it through BOSEs, correct?
We would and we wouldn't. There would be things that we would buy direct from vendors, things that we wouldn't.
So you don't know how much-
Yeah, so, you know, it was all over the place. But, you know, as a perfect example, we were, we had like 38 different styles of copiers throughout the district. You know, 75% of our help desk tickets were for copier help. I mean, there are 38 different styles and I think eight different models, because we were, it was dispersed. And so honing it all into one group, it's really streamlined our efforts. And that's the way we were buying our equipment, too. It was, so this is a much easier, budgetary-friendly, simpler, streamlined way to do it.
Seventy-five percent of that seems high. That copiers were responsible for 75% of the tickets. And I'm assuming they would be repairs or just breakdowns or whatever.
Troubleshooting.
Troubleshooting. So the vendors-
So every time you tried to open up a computer in the district, if it was a district computer, it'd take like 15 minutes to log it in.
I must have misunderstood you. I thought you said copiers.
Copiers, printers.
Okay. The only reason I'm asking is-
Most printers. I should have said printers would have been the better.
Oh, okay. Because it would seem to me that the vendor that supplied the copier would have provided the support.
It's printers.
I gotcha. No, that's fine. That makes sense.
And all the print drivers were slowing everything down.
I got it. Okay, thank you. The item that says the reduction of non-instructional staff by 1.0, I'm just confused by that or surprised by that. That's probably a better explanation, given our increase in equipment and the, you know, the instructional programs' growth. This, how did you-
It's the same person. They're dual-certified. They're also instructionally certified.
So they are still hired?
They're still with us.
Okay.
They're just new responsibilities.
I see. Okay.
They are shifting from what is a tech position to an instructional technology position.
Okay. All right. So it's really a paper loss.
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
Pardon?
Yeah. So, yep, we are shifting-
Oh, I see. I'm sorry.
That 1.0 tech-
Okay, got it.
-to instructional staff and a 1.0 teaching assistant into instructional technology from different places in the budget. The one tech is being moved from the non-instructional line into the instructional line. A little bit more additional support for conferences this year. And we're maintaining our summer school and school year student work program, which has been phenomenally successful this year, especially in the summertime. I think the video that Joe and Brian showed about what those kids were able to do over the summer, there's no way we'd ever want to lose that, even if we have to pay them more for minimum wage, because their benefit to the district has been great. And you'll see some BOSEs increases, some additional Project Lead the Way supplies this year. Our software costs are going up faster than I had envisioned or predicted, as we've gotten our arms around exactly how much software we have in the district and what's being used and what's not being used. But generally, the more we buy at BOSEs, we're going to see those cost increases going up because their programs tend to go up every year. And I know it's not on the slide, but I just wanted to update the board on the Smart Bond project as well. We're well into our way of that. If you've been around some of the buildings, you've probably noticed some additional wireless routers throughout. Soon, hopefully, start seeing the security cameras going up as well. But one of the things that we're always scared about is they promised us a 90-day turnaround when you submitted claims for reimbursement. It actually took less than 30 when we submitted our first claim. And so it was fairly simple and easy process, and it turned around a lot quicker than we imagined it would be. So I just, I thought about that, and figured it'd give the board a quick update as it's tied to technology as well. So just to point out on the line items, you see the salaries going up because there's two new people in there. And that one person leaving the non-instructional line has reduced that, has taken away any kind of increase and actually has lessened it. So all the salary increases proposed for next year in that group has been mitigated plus some going into next year.
The software is going up again.
Correct. So we have two types of software. We have the state one-to-one software, that's very restrictive, that, you know, that's all we get. But we spend close to 3/4 of a million dollars a year on software that's included this 150. The rest of it is in this BOSE services line.
The software, is it subscription-based or program-based, or does it vary depending on the application?
Varies.
Right. Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Some of it are, you know, uniform licenses per, you know, one per building, one per district, it could be per kid. It really, it all runs the entire gamut. Next part of the budget is just instructional supervision, principals and secretaries. All their supplies and materials are included in the building budgets per building, but their salaries, we have presented here, less than what the contractual rates are. We've had some breakage over the past couple of years with some principal movements. Many new principals at the secondary level with starting salaries versus experienced principals that have moved on. So we've had some breakage there, which helps bring the overall net increase down for the Any questions on that? Okay. Next up is just our regular instructional budget. You know, a couple highlights. You'll see salary increases are below the contractual rates for our instructional staff. Tremendous amount of breakage from our 1516 retirements are coming off the books, replaced by new teachers for 1718. We have no FTE increase here at all. One area of increase, though, is our equipment. We have Project Lead the Way in its final phase-in with some additional equipment. We also have some additional music equipment that was requested in this year's budget to change out band and orchestra replacements. So increases for that as well. Very small BOSEs increase in this budget. Overall, we spend 28% of our budget is purely on instructional expenses. There's a three-year look back of what we're proposing. As you can see, that's a significant, when salaries only go up 1.8% on a very large staff, there's a tremendous amount of breakage. So really, only three line items going up. Salaries, you see the equipment there. We historically don't spend a lot on instructional equipment, so that increase skews the overall percentage. But, you know, it's needed at this time for replacement. And then just a very small BOSEs increase for next year in instruction. So one of the things to point out, I know it's been proposed in the governor's budget and in some of the other budgets, haven't seen how it's going to happen, is the allowance of textbook aid and textbook expenditures. We spent significantly more on textbooks than our textbook aid line. So it would be interesting to see how we're allowed to change those expenditures around for eBooks, online materials, and the professional development that goes with it. It's been proposed in the governor's budget, and I believe it's been carried in both Assembly and Senate's budget. So that'll be interesting to see what kind of impact that could have on the district, if we're going to shift expenses around or change something up. I know Mr. Neenan and myself have been talking back and forth about what kind of impact that would have, so.
Right. The dollar amount per student that, or-
Yeah, they just said, you'll be allowed to use textbook monies for professional development and expand your, right now, we could use it for online textbooks, but it had some language about expanding, expanding what we could buy that is, would be considered online materials with textbook money.
Is there a differentiation in budget lines for general staff development versus development for staff members who are getting their required degrees, you know, from bachelor's to master's? Or are they all in the same line? Huh?
I don't think-
We don't offer?
No, I think that's on their own.
Incentives? Okay.
They're, when they're hired, there's-
The incentives in the salary.
Yeah. When they're hired, it comes into their salary, depending on how many degrees they have.
So if they're, if they're hired with a bachelor's degree, they're required to get a master's degree within a certain amount of time?
Correct.
We don't help pay for that?
We can, yes. It is part, there's a contractual piece. So, yeah, it's basically, it's per credit hour.
Yeah. So where is that in the budget versus other staff development?
It would actually be part of instructional salaries.
It's in their salaries. Yes, yes.
Okay. So it's in the salary. When you said it's in their salaries, I wasn't sure. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
There isn't a line that, you know, we-
There's not a separate line.
There's not a separate line that says, you know, this is what is going to St. John Fisher, or, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up is special education. The one area where we will have a 1.0 FTE increase for next year, we are going to hire a district audiologist. And we really began exploring this towards the beginning of this fiscal year, because I had noticed at the end of 1516, we spent almost $250,000 at BOSEs on audiological services. And so there's got to be a cheaper way to do this. How come we can't hire our own person that would be able to service our kids? So with Shelley's help, we were able to make this happen. So we won't see an immediate save, immediate big savings until 1819, till that budget. Because next year is really a planning for it. Bring the person on. There are some upfront costs. We're just shifting those costs away from BOSEs to get the equipment and things like that. So I'm assuming we'll have some savings next year. Not confident to put a number on it quite yet, but there will be a little bit of savings. But with the amount of technology this person and support will need and what we'll have to do to adjust an area, I think it'll be a net even-out for 1718. But then, once we have that and have it ready to go, come 1819, we'll have the savings realized for that budget cycle. So it's a, it'll be, it's a two-year process. But that, we're getting it started by hiring the audiologist for 1718. Questions on that?
I have an idea.
Yeah, we have the population for it. We, I mean, we are sending a significant amount of kids every month, I see on the bill, from BOSEs on how often we utilize that service. And so it just makes sense. Some of the, you know, Greece has their own. They're a larger district. And it just made sense for us to tackle that as well.
Time, I bet. For certain, for-
Yeah, weight, travel, you know. I think we found a nice centrally-located spot in the district, too. So, yeah, I think it'll be a benefit for the district. So you'll see a lot of breakage in these numbers coming up for special education. Almost a complete non-increase in instructional salaries for next year. Non-instructional salaries going up a little bit. Special education equipment budget line going up. salaries going up a little bit. Special education equipment budget line going up. There are some needs in the program to have some specialized equipment that the $2,000 from the previous couple of years weren't, weren't able to address. So we need to increase that line. And I guess, one of the things about equipment is it's a contingent budget item. So you can transfer out of it, but you can't transfer into it. So when there's an oops, or, oh, we have to respond to something, it can only come from certain places. And so to have a little bit more wiggle room in the equipment line, to be able to address that is great. Because most of the time, it just ends up becoming Blaine getting upset with me, because he can't go buy a new plow truck. Because we'll have to take it from his equipment line to address some specific instructional needs. And so that's why, you know, want to address it upfront, rather than have to beg, borrow, and steal from it later. So, like we did this year. So now, going forward, we'll have that flexibility to do that. Our BOSI services actually trending just below 4%, which is a great year for us when it comes to that, even though it's a large number. Because those programs tend to run anywhere from, you know, 5, 8% increase on tuition costs year to year over. So any year, we keep it around 4% is great. Overall, the special education budget is 1.67% increase, just a shade less than $300,000 increase. Trem, you know, a lot due to the smaller tuition costs going into next year. And going into 18, 19, we already know we can save $100,000. So it's good to have that in the back pocket going into, knowing the following budget year, and able to add that FTE with really no, no impact at all. Any questions on that? Okay. So next up is our pupil services. That's all of our support, guidance services, social workers, psychologists, our attendance, nursing services, what we spend at occupational education, and summer school. Okay. Very small increase here. Once again, savings on salaries. Overall, less than 1%. We did add three grant positions in 16, 17 into our, for our social workers. They were now funding through a grant. So you see, we are at 3.1% on the instructional salaries. Once again, that common theme, it's in a grant. I'm worried. So I brought some of that money from the grant back into the general fund, just in case. So nobody would be out because a grant gets cut, and there's people in there. We don't want to lose anybody, because it's been a tremendous asset for 16, 17. So, you know, not, I guess the best way to say it is not realizing all the breakage savings that we could have on this line to, an effort to keep some funds there as a placeholder, in case there's any, anything done to our title grants in the future. Next up, library. You know, we had some tremendous breakage. So you see a net decrease in these budget lines, which allowed us to be able to see our BOSI services go up a little bit more for our BOSI's databases. We expanded some of the requests that we had this year for databases and for online access. So an increase for that, but still overall a net savings to the district when we talk library. Just something to consider that I heard tremendously through the budget process, and Mr. Gaminas, I'm sure, has heard as well, because the librarians aren't shy about sharing their opinion when they see one of us, is, so Thomas and Spire are getting new libraries. How about ours? So it's, you know, putting it on our radar, because some of them, at the elementary level, could use in updating, could, no, it could be brought into the 21st century. I couldn't necessarily disagree with any of them, when, you know, when we've been out there meeting with people. So it's just something to think about, if you haven't been told already. Next up, our co-curricular activities. These are just our after-school support. Two real areas of increase, and have to do with marching band. Marching band is due for some updated equipment. You know, it's the past two years, they have not had any equipment on their line items, 15, 16, 16, 17. Mr. Roller has proposed a $10,000 increase to help replace some of their equipment. Same thing with some of their supply money. So those are two major increases right there. Still, when we talk major increases, it's all relative to the size of what we spend on co-curricular activities, though. Really, less than half a percent of our budget is spent on co-curricular activities on a year-to-year basis.
Their activities are in the secondary buildings. Is that a correct statement?
That is 100% correct statement.
Is there any thought to possibly extending it to our elementary buildings?
Historically, here's the issue with the extracurricular, because then it gets into extra class, and extra class accounts, and fundraising. And we are prohibited by law to hold accounts like that at elementary schools. We can hold them at middle and secondary schools. So that is quite often where the rubber meets the road, and why it does not exist at elementary, because we're not allowed to have those extracurricular accounts and do that kind of fundraising at the elementary level, like you are at the secondary level. It doesn't necessarily mean that you couldn't do something like that at the elementary, but they would have, it would be a tough way to do, they do a tremendous amount of fundraising through those groups, and it'd be tough to do it without a partner. You know, you'd have to find a partner willing, like a PTSA at the elementary level, that can act as their account. Some of them do, some of them don't, so.
I think I didn't explain this well enough. Supposing we had an elementary drama club. We would pay, on the secondary level, the drama coach. And then the drama coach would do whatever. We don't pay a drama coach on the elementary level, even though we may have some schools that are interested in drama. So I don't see how we couldn't add a salary there without having to do all that extra stuff that happens at the secondary level.
You're going to sell tickets to a performance?
No.
Typically.
Because it really would be just open to family.
Right. You want to sell concessions?
Like the chorus kind of, no, no.
We don't do that.
Not at, that's all. Not at an elementary. I mean, they're usually shorter programs, so.
No, just, it's just, it's just a-
No, I-
I'm throwing it out there.
I think it's a great idea. No, it is.
For future thought.
I just, because we've had those conversations, and the natural, next inclination is, is okay, how do I start, how do I get access to those fundraisers?
Totally understand that.
And so that's where, it would be beneficial to have a plan for that set up simultaneous to expanding that advisorship at the elementary level. Because I think it'd be great. Love it. The play at Plank South was great. Thought it was awesome. Well-done. So it's-
They do have, you know, Spanish clubs, and Lego clubs, chess clubs, and it's done through PTSA.
But there also is a-
Are they-
Yep.
And the kids pay for supplies.
They hire somebody.
They do hire.
PTSA will hire somebody.
But it's usually not a staff member.
Correct.
Right?
And there is a variety of activities available at the schools. They're not consistent. And it would seem to me, if there was a financial parameter there, there might be more consistency, which I have to believe would be desirable. So I'll add to Mike's food for thought.
Okay. I'm all, I'm all, I'm all for it.
And I know the continue, or community education program provides things during the summer that are run through them. And that was begun a number of years ago, to kind of avoid all of that need for audits and such.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. So that is the last budgetary area. So in summary, looks like we have $167,607,399 in revenue. And so tonight, we presented $86.7 million in expenditures. Last presentation, we were at $81,533,019. But since we've last met, we made an adjustment to benefits by about $125,000 down. Took a harder look at our TRS projections for next year, when the rates got finalized, and we got the exact salaries that were going to be accounted for that rate. So we're able to reduce that amount of our budget a little bit more. So overall, draft budget, we're looking at $168,136,711, a 2.61% increase, or $4,276,491. You probably noticed, these two numbers do not equal each other. So what do we have? We have a little over a half-million-dollar budget gap going into, going into the stretch run here. Additional state aid. How are we going to bridge this? I'm confident, I think we'll get this through state aid. If not, go back and take a look at some of the things that were in this budget. What could we pull out to make everything fit? Definitely, my recommendation would be to no additional use of any reserves for, to close this gap, which isn't that very large of a gap.
Now, you've confused me. Go back to Slide 4.
He said no additional use.
Well, no, yeah, I went up by, what, $75,000, I think, as part of this exercise.
Well, on Slide 4, you're showing a $2 million use of the reserves.
Correct.
I just want to be very cautious here, because we have taken down our reserves on a continual basis. And I think the Audit Committee might suddenly say, are we getting to that point where fiscally unhealthy, particularly in the case of unforeseen situation happening? So I'm just concerned about-
Right.
-our reserves dwindling.
Right. So for 16, 17, we're at $1.9, a little over $1.9 million. So I use $2 million as just a nice even number to see where that would get us. So I'm, yeah.
So if our, our budget gaps, half-million dollars, and we get, we get that in additional state aid, would be lower than the amount of reserves we're using?
Correct. Yep. That would be my recommendation. You beat me to my line. That would be my, anything over that budget gap, you know, would be used to bring the amount of reserves we're appropriating back down.
Can I come together? We express concern about our credit rating.
Correct.
If we use an additional $2 million, will that continue to have a negative impact on our credit rating?
No, because right now, for 16, 17, we have earmarked $1.9 million to close our budget gap. I don't envision us spending a dime of that in 16, 17. And I wouldn't envision us spending anything further. For 17, 18, it just helps us balance our books. But then, because it's there, that's, just limits the flexibility in case there's an emergency or something, an expenditure that, you know, it reduces your fund balance, and what you could have access to. So, you know, my concern would be just, Brian says, people can't spend more money, or we can't do something throughout the year that maybe we hadn't thought about, because the fund balance isn't there on a year-to-year basis.
Does anybody have any other questions? No. Mike?
Nope.
I do have an additional question.
Sure.
So in light of what's happening at the federal level, you know, we don't really know when their budget's going to be finalized. If there was any impact on our budget, either from directly, federal aid that comes directly to our district, or flow through, through the state, any adjustments, what would we, how would we address them?
Well, I tried to a little bit. For the most part, we're covered on our grants, but I wanted to be a little covered. That's why you saw some of those-
Yeah.
-salary increases a little bit more. Because over the last month, month and a half, as some of that has kind of trickled out of, you know, I think, you remember sequestration?
Yeah.
Some of that stuff. It didn't turn out to, you know, I'm kind of under that same thought process. Well, maybe we'll lose some, not all. So let's, you know, if we could pull $50,000 out of the grant, you know, keep it in the grant when we go to apply, but also back it up into the general fund and have those funds available. Let's, let's see if we can do that.
Right. Because we don't want to have to make any big changes during the school year.
Correct.
We want to have enough of a cushion-
Correct.
-so that if we have to make adjustments, we can make them next year.
Correct.
Okay. So we're all thinking the same thing?
Yes.
Okay. Good, good.
Mike, just to go back to your other question. If I left that number at what it is, the 1.9 million and change this year, all it would have done was just given us an extra $75,000 on the budget gap. Would have made it $600,000. So-
We have to, we have to be conscious of our reserves.
Yep. Mm-hmm.
Well, Brian, I would just like to thank you very much for all the hard work that you've put into this. And we really appreciate the work that you're doing around maximizing our dollars, whether it be through bringing positions, bringing students back, taking positions, you know, whatever. You're doing all kinds of things, but it's, we see the positive impact on the budget, and we really appreciate-
Thank you. I can take all the credit, Mr. Neenan and Ms. Kehum.
Yes. And staff.
And staff, helping.
So thank you. No, I mean, you know, it's about ma, it's like calling up Verizon and saying, hey, I want a better deal. But you're doing that on, you know, a lot of different levels and a lot of different lines, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
We want to be fiscally responsible for our students and for our community. So thank you. So having said that, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.